We need to order at 6 o'clock for the Beth Charter Township. We're meeting for the agenda. We're going to start with one, which we've called the order. Karen, I'm going to skip a minute. You may want to explain to everybody what you explained to us, the few of us that were here with regards to...
Sure. So the microphones, the new snack microphones that did not arrive yet. So we have to do one more meeting with the microphones that are in front of you. In order to turn the microphones up to have the most effective sound for the live streaming and the taping of this meeting, we had to disconnect, turn off the speaker in the corner, and there was a speaker up there. So that gave your voice a little bit of projection in this room, small, small amount. But it was creating feedback. It's that terrible sound that you hear that when you close their ears up. So in order to turn these up really high, we had to turn those off. So your projection in this room may be very limited. You may want to speak up so that everyone can hear. Same for the podium. Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. So everybody who understands during public comments, they'll have to talk a little louder in order for, I guess, for it to be taped or for the rest of us to hear. All right, we can take number two, which is our civil reflection. So if you all stand, please, I appreciate it. Would you pledge allegiance?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a member of silence, please. Thank you. We're going to have item three, which is the approval of the agenda. Right, the second for approval of the agenda.
What'd you say?
Approval of the agenda. The only change will be checking a vote to approve the minutes, but that comes later. So things isn't changes.
I'll make some change to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. All right, Kirk.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fionnas Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
And number four, we have a disclosure of conflict of interest.
Hi. I want to abstain from 13 B.A. and 13 B.B. is the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Participant Agreement and the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Uniform Resolution.
All right, that is... Is anybody disagreeing with that?
We have to move and approve it.
Yes, I know. She's going to motion, so...
Although she can make that motion, but she's asked to abstain.
Yes, she can with a conflict of interest.
Well, you didn't make the motion.
No, I just asked.
She asked for it.
I wouldn't allow the town to abstain from the vote on 13 B.A. and 13 B.B. as important.
13 B.? Also 13 B.B., okay.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fionnas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
All right, we're on item five, which is our first public comment or statements. And this can be only for the agenda.
Good evening. So nice to see you all in person.
That's a proof.
My name is Judy Gardi, and I'm president or chairperson of the Senior Services Advisory Board, and I want to speak on... 14E, requiring seniors, the discussion about whether or not to require seniors to be vaccinated to come into the senior center. I did a straw poll of the Senior Services Advisory Board, and the majority of people on the board feel that it's personal choice whether or not you're vaccinated. And many of them understand that vaccinations are important and why they're important, and have been vaccinated. And we all believe that vaccinations protect ourselves and protect those around us. I will take not as position as the chairperson of the Senior Services Advisory Board, but as an individual citizen in the community, I personally feel that anyone who comes to the senior center should be vaccinated for our protection and their own protection. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Judy. Is there anybody else? All right, we'll move to... I see nine. So we'll move to item six, which is also for county, state, federal, or other agencies. Doesn't appear to be any. So we will then go to item seven, which is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fionnas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we go to item eight, which is approval of the minutes. And I would like to, myself, did anybody ask that? This is because I would like to change or challenge, not challenge, that's a wrong term, Brenda. I would like to put in a change. That would be on page... will be on the comments. So that would be next to... well, actually, it's page 10. Brenda? Okay. I'd like to put a period after questions, strike out, as she's the only been in the office since November, and put in, "I've been here since November. Others have been here much longer. I do not excuse myself. Communication is two-way." I have that written down. Bring it back. Yeah, that helps. So that's my change. So I make a motion to...
You said what you said.
I'm going to go back and check.
Oh.
I have to go back and check.
She has to go back and check.
Oh, okay.
Because I did. It was said, but it was almost like a start. So I wanted to finish it. That was the only... See the other changes? All right. Is there a second? No. Okay. Doesn't pass. So we'll leave the minutes as is. So we're going to have the approval of minutes.
What?
We're going to have an approval of the minutes.
Isn't that what you just asked for?
No, I asked for a change. And I didn't get a second, so that moves on to...
Did you make a motion?
I did.
Oh. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
I know. That's okay. No, I did.
Shouldn't we wait until after we find out what was on the recording before...
Certainly, that's...
Before we approve the minutes then?
So is the motion not to approve the minutes until the clerk has a chance to check?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I don't think we need a motion for that.
I think we do, only because we're checking to make sure that the minutes are correct. And if the minutes are not correct, then...
I'm not sure. We do or not. But I did.
We don't make a motion to not approve something.
I'm making a motion to approve it. She's saying she has to check it.
I thought you just said that that motion didn't get seconded.
It didn't get seconded.
Then that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about their motion.
Who's motion?
My motion is...
Do you know what the motion on the floor is?
The motion on the floor is to hold the minutes until it's time for Brenda to check, for our clerk to check it out.
To not accept them.
To not... Well, no. She's going to be checked to see what the...
He said to not accept them. That was the wording that he used.
Yes. Not accept them as is.
Yes. I'm saying you don't need a motion for that. You just take no action, and then you take action on them in the future.
Yeah, you can do it that way.
You can do it that way. Thank you, Joe. All right. Now, do we all understand what's going to take place with the minutes? Okay. Item nine, approval of vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fionnas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
So appears that's unanimous. Okay. Item 10, Treasury report doesn't seem to be one. Eleven committee appointments, none. Twelve committee reports, none. Unfinished business items for introduction and discussion doesn't seem to be any. So now we go items for action. And appears that is the... Oh, do we have a motion? Items for action.
I would move the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement as written by Superintendent Gilbert. Support.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fionnas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes. All right, items for action. B is in void. B, the MERS Healthcare Program Uniform Resolution. Yes.
I would move to adopt the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Uniform Resolution by Superintendent Gilbert.
Super.
Mr. Fionnas Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
All right, we're going to do B. C. is in Charles. The resolution establishing the authorization signatures for MERS contracts and service credit purchase approvals. That's Superintendent Gilbert.
Thank you. This just gives me the authorization to sign a statement that you approved tonight.
Move approval of the resolution establishing authorized signatories for MERS contracts and service credit purchase approvals as presented.
Second.
Maria, have a question.
Discussion? Yes, treasure.
Could you stand on what a service contract credit purchase for...
A service credit purchase, it's my understanding is that there are people that have been here for some time, and they are a short time away from retirement. They can purchase credit towards their retirement, so they can retire.
Does that require the full board's approval, or does that... does the signer's approval?
No, that would require a full board.
So then the person who has this has been asked to do this can come back, and we go before the board and get the full approval. It isn't just one person making the decision?
Correct.
Thank you.
Could I clarify that?
All right.
I'm sorry. The purchasing of the credits has to go before the board?
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, I believe that's...
Is this the MERS program?
Yes.
I have experience in the MERS program, and that's something between the employee and the state of Michigan.
Okay.
It does not have to have board approval. They're allowed to sign a contract with the state of Michigan, and they can pay for it several different ways. But once we have an agreement with them, it's on the employee. It won't have any board action at all. That's all done by the state of Michigan and MERS.
Okay, my mistake.
And I can tell you how that works. I see Ryan's agreeing with him.
We've done one in the past for a former employee, and it was for action. So it could be my misunderstanding, but at that time, it came to board.
Yeah, okay. Well, I suppose we can do it that way, except I know we don't have to. I know that they can write...
And it could be that was handled by the former superintendent?
Yes, they can do that.
Probably be wise for the person who's doing it to contract their MERS person on that stuff?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It could be real wise if we were having a meeting with all those people doing it, get their contract, and how much it's going to cost.
Take a day off?
Take a day off, figure it out.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
That's just my past experience. Are you ready?
Any other discussion? Need a vote?
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wissfasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Fionnas Bliss?
Yes.
All right, D, which is items for action. Department restructuring.
Thank you. This is a continuation of the restructuring that you had before you relaxed, using the job description for Recreation Coordinator combines both the recreation position that was full-time, or excuse me, part-time, 32 hours a week, with the farmer's market manager position, which was approximately 15 hours a week. And it changes it to a full-time with benefits, with a family-grade full package of benefits. That I own for the benefits is included in the budget amendments that are later in your packet. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if there are any specifics anybody would like to know.
Trustee, have a vote.
So I know last time this was brought before us, there was two different positions that was coming up for consideration. I'm just curious, where are things on that other position?
It seems to be the desire of the, of this group, at least at the time that I was presenting it, to keep the senior center position as a senior center position, and to keep this recreation position separate so that there's no difference between one to the other. I am still looking at, but I don't know if the, if the timing is correct financially for to create a position that would oversee that umbrella of departments. So right now, it's a difficult matter that I have to see if it will get in touch with you.
So just so that I'm clear, you don't anticipate bringing the senior services position back before us?
I'm going as a full-time job, but not as overseeing the department.
I have a quick question. Tail-dogging or dovetailing on what Jason was saying. So this particular position you're looking at includes the farmer's market and the park and recreation or recreation?
Correct.
Which is it? Is it park? Because I get confused. Is it park?
I can't change the department currently because it's written in the budget that way at this time. And I don't know with changes that are coming down that Mr. President Wissfasser and I will be working on in that would be. But it's commonly known this parks in recreation. So you all know that we took the parks out, and we put that with the director of public works at the last meeting. So this is the recreation part of that job combined with farmer and market responsibilities.
So are we looking for someone new, or are we going to take one of the chairs to make it a director? Are we looking to create this department with a new director?
A new employee?
At this time, it's just getting an employee.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yes.
Okay.
There's no existing employees that could facilitate or step into this position.
Okay.
I have some just small wording things, but I think what we're going to vote on is the creation of the position. So I'll just share it with you later. Little things about the degrees and things like that. Nothing that would substantially change any of this.
All right, so we have a discussion? All right, we need a vote?
I'd like to move to postpone the consideration of this job description.
Okay.
For any further discussion. I'd like to see a little bit more coordination between the two positions. I do worry that this is not substantially different from the current Parks Director position that exists within the township outside of the responsibilities of farmer's market, which I think can be assumed, and then, of course, the full-time. So I just, I worry that if we move forward on this position, that we may preclude possibilities with other positions that we're about considering.
Do you have a question, Ryan?
No.
Okay. All right, so there are actually two motions on. One is to postpone, which is what you'd like to do.
There's just one motion.
So... I don't know if you can look at it. Okay. So, go ahead, Karen.
If I may, I will only point out not as a factor in moving you to act. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just letting you know that our current farmer's market manager will be moving on as of August 26th. So we will be moving to find temporary assistance, which I know you've done a couple of times. We may ask you and additional people to help fill in that role until this role can be filled. Okay, thank you.
No, and you're looking to postpone it for how long? Just so the superintendent has an idea?
Until the next meeting.
Okay, so for two weeks?
There's a lot that is going into this. I'm not sure, you know, we've really taken the time, and I apologize, maybe if you have, like, to talk to the different committees, the constituent committees, the Parks and Rec Committee, as well as the Farmer's Market Committee. I think you need to talk to Adam, the chair.
Actually, I talked to Ryan through his serving as liaison today.
So again, I don't want to preclude, you know, we're thinking about kind of a larger restructuring. And I know, I personally feel that we have short shrifted our recreation within our community. And I don't want to perpetuate that with a position that's... And again, with all the recycling companies that have gone into that, I know this has been a lot of work. I just want to make sure that you, we're going to go through with this and create a full-time position that we really, really think about and plan and love. So that's, you can break down the silos across our...
People collaborate on short shifting the community and the...
So the Parks and Rec does not at all met during 2021. I'm not sure how often they met during 2022. My understanding is that the majority of the work that Parks and Rec does is organization of people and other sports. I feel that there's a lot more that a Parks or a recreation department can do in terms of partnering with the farmer's market, partnering with the library, partnering with the Park Place Friends Group, partnering with Bath Days. We have a lot of different events that the township reps, departments, or personnel have nots than I have partners. And that is likely overstated. I apologize at that, or because of that. But I'd like to make sure that we break down the silos between those different entities in our community and that we can share resources, we can share planning, and have economies of scale for the money that we put into various systems.
The only comment I might add is, before we get to the final minutes, I might want to check with the clerk and make sure she put 2020 as opposed to 2022. I figured you did. When you... You did. And I want to make sure so the minutes... All right, so is there any other discussion?
You need a second.
So should I need to... I'm sorry.
You need a second on that motion.
I know. I'd have to move the motion so everybody understands. We're looking to postpone this particular item D, Department of Restructuring, until, about two weeks?
Yes.
Okay. So I need a second. I'll second. Got it? Okay.
I do.
Well, we second. You have a discussion with regards to this?
Yeah. You don't have discussion between the first and the second. You have it after the second.
No, you have it between the...
I'm sorry, that's incorrect.
Okay, guys.
You can look it up and fax it to me later.
You can look it up and fax it to me. You can...
I guarantee it.
Thank you. That'll be...
Can I say I can't now?
You can. So if you have a second, we have discussions. Go ahead.
I don't think we should postpone it. I think we've put the rec position on hold too long. I think everything Jason said is correct. We've short shrifted things. We need to build bridges with those folks. But the only way we're going to build bridges with them is if we have a person in place to do the bridge building. We could write those things into the job description if that's helpful, but I don't think there's fundamentally anything else that we're going to change structurally to get those bridges to be built, other than hiring the right person and engaging with those other groups. We're taking a 32-ish hour person and a 15-ish hour person, putting them together for a 40-hour person, which to me seems fair. I think there'll be some give and take depending on the season for the farmer's market and rec. And I think it'll make a good, solid position. We're voting on the creation or expansion of the position. Ultimately, if Karen wants to change departments around or shift those types of resources, that doesn't require a board action, and she can still align those things better. What takes board action is the creation of the position. So I think that's what we should do so she can post it and get some qualified candidates.
Jason, you have any more discussion? So we have two on. One will postpone, and the other does not. Is that what you're making a motion not to postpone?
I can't make a motion. There's a motion on the floor.
That's what I understand. But what's your...
So I am not making a motion.
Okay. So go ahead.
There's only one motion on the floor. There was never a motion for approval. There's only one motion on the floor. There was never a motion for approval of that.
There was never a motion to what?
For approval of proof that our position is certain.
No, I understand. We did the other.
There's been a motion.
The motion is for your postponement and then her second motion is for not postponing it.
I'm not making a motion.
He's not going to make a motion. So we're going to vote on whether we postpone it or not. Okay.
Mr. Betsy?
Yes.
Mr. Whistler?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Fowle, Chandler, Cass?
Mr. Rosemary?
Yes.
Mr. Pughless?
No.
Mr. Almarichi?
Yes.
Can I have a follow-up question then?
A follow-up question? We go on to some of this if you.
Can I just ask you a question, please?
Yes. Depends on Robert's rules.
There's something that says that you cannot ask a question after a vote.
That all means.
Thank you. So just to clarify for Karen, what is she doing in the next two weeks to get this to a place where we would want to vote on it?
So, I mean, I can go in a number of different directions. I think I'd like to see a little bit of progress on the senior services position and what kind of articulation could be there. I think that I think we need to have some clarity as to what exactly this position, what do we want to see this position do? Is this going to be somebody who coordinates volunteers? Or is this somebody that could do a little bit more relationship building within the township? I think that if we had some understanding of what neighboring townships do with their parks and rec, that might help support. So what is the way the township do, neighboring township, with their parks? How is that structured and organized? I'm not sure, you know, when I think about the services that are provided in our township, I don't know if it makes sense to continue to have a senior services as this island in and of itself. They obviously provide incredible amount of support for the seniors in our community. But I, you know, with how things look like they're shaping, it looks like two separate positions, two different people who will continue doing their separate things. I'd like to see a little bit more articulation and if we can build that into a structure of the position that's going to reinforce those relationships. So to be specific, I think seeing two set of job descriptions side by side overall as but not a formal analysis, but analysis of what neighboring communities do with their preparation for permits.
Can I help with your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. All right. Are we ready to move on now to new business? Evidence for introduction and discussion? 2022 liability insurance overview? There doesn't seem to be an attachment. Just. Do we have somebody here to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Orton with David Chapman Agency here out of Lansing. Represented the township here for several years concerning the township's insurance. I did get a chance and we did sit down with superintendent and did go over a few things, such as buildings and property values and things such as that. Every year I try and come out and see the board personally, just to make sure you remember what I look like. I don't try to see it on half face, but I care. And kind of talk about what's going on for this year that we'll be doing on your staff. One of the things that we will be doing, property revaluations, I'll be coming out in a couple of months and we'll be taking pictures of the buildings and measuring, make sure we have everything accurate in the current form of policy. Also be meeting with the fire chief. We'll be discussing equipment lists as well as some policies and procedures and some of the new training we have for emergency services personnel when it comes to actually cybersecurity and holding the data safe. We at the agency have actually seen more cyber threats for governmental entities than we've seen in the past 10 years. Prior to this, we can see that often in retail businesses and things such as that. But lately, we've been starting to see a lot more activity when it comes to the governmental entities having some breaches or issues. Some of that including ransomware or another type of relevant crime is social engineer pretending, getting notices from somebody who wasn't even asking for money past time. One of the things that our program does have is we instituted a grant program about eight years ago, which the township has, has taken advantage of that in the past. We'll be coming up with a list of actionable things that we can ask each company for to limit our liability and property damage, such as cameras. I know it's one backup camera. I'm tired of trucks is another dash dance. So I think we would look out for before for the police department. So I'll be coming up with a list of things that we can talk about possibly to go across the company list fall. They do, they do two grant cycles, one in the spring. We would be obviously going for the fall. If we didn't, weren't able to get our thing done by then, it does give us an opportunity to still do that same thing in the spring if we so wish to. Other than that, I thank you for your time and open for any quick questions? Thank you very much. And I'll be there to hold it here in the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Number 14B, we have the 2022 SCUBA operating, SCUMA operating budget and the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Buskey, thank you.
Good to see you, trustees, again. I'll be brief on the budget and I'll have to go over any detail that you'd like to do. It's pretty extensive. I'll keep it pretty much tied to that unless you'd like to go into more detail about the plan itself. Overall, the 2022 school budget has a 5% increase. That is a rather significant increase. Unfortunately, 3% of that increase comes directly related to utility costs. That's about equates to $97,000 and that's directly related to increases in consumers in D W L. Additionally, some of the, there are many 2% of increases goes to MERS and just operational expenses in general. The good news with our MERS is we've kind of, we've hit the plateau. It's good to see. We did it quicker than we planned, much lower than due to past additional contributions school has made in the last four years and the market returns. So right now, we're seeing costs at $156,000, being the cap. Previously, that was just over $200,000 a year and that we should start seeing those numbers decline. That is good news. With that being said, school board still plans to pay additional funds to keep our contributions going in the right direction. We are funding it at a 7%, MERS actually requires a funding of 7.25%. That additional 0.35% equates about $22,000. For the capital improvements plan, we have to give howling capital improvements plan back as it relates to the project I think Karen talked to you about last time. We didn't want to spend money in the capital improvements budget. Ultimately have those items removed in a short period of time to facilitate a larger plan. So we helped it back and we continue to plan to do that for 2022 besides the RBC rehabilitation plan. The RBC rehabilitation plan was started about five years ago. It's been extremely successful. We have no longer seen extreme overweights in the winter months. They become more manageable within specs for the RBCs themselves. This is done completely in-house. We worked with a local machine shop, developed a sleeve process that we actually machine in place and then sleeve the stub shaft on the RBC and put it in the bearing on. The cost for that project's been pretty close to $50,000 and $60,000. We budget $65,000. We are seeing some of these commodities increase. Starts out with a lower than we're dealing with. So that'll be the only CIP project of any significance we will afford it. And as for the VAS collection system alone, we would have continued on with our order reduction plan. This includes the introduction of infused air in a lot of the wet wells and removing some of the chemical additions that we've become accustomed to over the years. The cost of the chemicals have continued to increase. So about two years ago, we tried to go down this little pilot program of aerating these wet wells and then installing order elimination canisters in some of the strategic areas of the forest mains and ultimately close proximities to some of the residential areas such as 208. Cross our fingers, things seem to be working well. That has lowered the chemical cost for the VAS township near $40,000. So we're happy to see that working and in hope to continue the progress in the system here in VAS. There will be more of those acres of the wastewater. Any questions? I'm happy to dive in more detail as it relates to the budget. Yes, sir.
Brad, is the MERS funding for the increase for the employees, is that paid for by the processing or is that paid for by ownership?
Ownership. All MERS returns plan, it played out to 200. That's the way it's been. That's the way we continue to operate it.
Then our ownership, I believe, was 20.17 or something like that?
16.72%.
16.72%?
Yes. Thank you.
I guess to expand on that, Mr. Whistler, your process is 27.21.
27.21. I knew it was. I wondered where we were with that as far as where we were going.
Yep.
If you look, if you look, the board member should look at the breakdown of that, of the budget and see what some of these percentages are, for instance, like vehicles and things like that. VAS township pays a very high rate compared to money else, because if you think about it, we're the farthest away and so the vehicles, who, because we put one miles on, probably work on.
Yep. You guys have a lot of stations, farther spread out, farther from SCUMA. Again, that's all put into the rolling average. So it's been great. Same with the process. Actually, VAS, we went down a small amount last year. You're at 27.44% in the process. And as we continue to see a decrease in our annual rate, rainfall, we're likely to see that kind of the real gave more away from VAS as well, but nobody can predict the weather 100%. So we'll play here, hear me here about that.
The two major forms of sustainment here for everything that gets done over there is by ownership or process, correct?
Correct. Yep.
And that's identified in the budget, if you see that.
So in the budget, if you look under the 200 account, that would be the ownership account and 201 would be the process. If you really want to dive into it, you'll align it there. 201 again is process, 200 is ownership. So I know you guys have a poor budget if you want to dive into that. I'm happy to go into that if you'd like or if you'd like to reach out with any questions. We'll, I'll have a, I'll get over to you if you have any luck.
Thank you, Mr. Buskey.
Would you like me to continue on? I think I'm on the next two as well, so.
It's up to you. If you want to keep going, you. That's the, I would like to add it, but it's a pleasure. If you would please.
Sure.
All right. So I believe in your agenda, this is item 14C, 14A.
AC.
Yes. So this is a pump upgrade recommendation. This is something we've worked on with the township engineers. And trying to do, we looked at a couple of different options. Unfortunately, the best solution is going to take a lot of time and still be evaluated. It's still something that we're working with. But in the short term, station 201 is the station down at the end of Slate Road. Should be Fort Chandler on the right side. That station was built sometime around 11. And it was when the forest main was added around Wood Road. That station was designed to handle 1,500 gallons per minute. Okay. That's a key component of this whole project. Unfortunately, that station met those requirements one moment in time. And I believe it was like 1,500 and 5 gallons per minute on startup. Likely it met that because there was nothing in the line and it was never hit that number again. The issue with that is pumps did. Station 202, which is actually back from station 201, was designing the pump 50 gallons of minute for less than that station. So station 201, very again, station we're talking about now, is responsible pumping all sewage collected by VAS township across Zeech property and into Twin Brook, which is a vortex manhole into the wet township. Station 202, which is one station back just down the hill, can pump 1,500 gallons per minute. So the issue being, we have to actually slow it down because we can only discharge about 1,200 at best. A lot of the time, we go about 1,000 gallons per minute, but all three pumps run at a complete placement energy. We're only gaining about 100 to 150 gallons per minute per pump as each one gets added at station 201, just to keep up with station 202 in the high flows. The equalization basis that you folks added at station 203 has been extremely helpful, particularly with these last couple of major rainstorms. Without that, likely there would have been some SSO that happens.
Sorry, I just, I don't know if I misheard you, but I, I think this might be wrong. So you had mentioned that the one time that we had met our max for the pumping, it was pumping nothing. Is it, did I mishear that?
I might have spoke misspoke. So the very first time that you actually met the criteria of which it was designed, there was nothing in the force main to pump it. So it was going into an empty line. It had nothing to restrict it. So it actually met the design criteria. Once we've been in operations, we've never been able to, unfortunately. The engineers had worked out long before I got here. To put it frank, it was not a well-designed project. And so it has been a lot to overcome. But we've worked through it. We've done a lot of different things. We've tried cleaning things. We added air release. We removed air release. Ultimately, the item that we'll be talking about next was ultimately originally installed in this project, but then later moved to help try to get the flows back up to where they were.
So I apologize again if I'm slow in this regard. So the issue with the pump is not that there isn't material to push through at 1,500 gallons per minute. It's that that pressure is preventing.
The restriction.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So the restriction in that line exceeds the ability of the pumps that are installed. So our most cost-effective way to try to address this is increase the pumping capacity. Without changing the line, your only option is to increase horsepower. As we're presenting here, it's something that we would do in-house with some local vendors' help. We think that the best idea would be to install this one pump for the wet weather higher flows to ensure proper capacity across the contracted line through the wet township. And then take that pump that we took out and use as a backup for the remaining two for the dry water flows. So we'd actually have a backup if one fails as they're getting up their age. Through life expectancy of these type of pumps, we've seen, I think, from 10 to 20 years. I know that's a very broad span, but the reality is they are underwater, they are in sewage and they run mostly time 24/7. So.
I have some, I'm sorry, I have some questions. So, so if you add more horsepower to the pump, that increases pressure with inside the pipes, receiving pipes?
Yep.
Do we have a good understanding of the pressure rating or the aging, the age of those pipes? If there might be a secondary issue down the road?
So the 1,500 gallons minute is what's relevant, right? Okay, so 15 in a pipe, anyway, 1,500 gallons minute fits through, it's going to create a certain amount of pressure. Unfortunately, the amount of pressure, the pipe was designed to receive that amount of pressure that we are looking to get to today for this project. We have never had the pressure of what that. We have never met the pressure of what that pipe can ultimately design to. So the design criteria is well within specs, there'll be no conditional issues of the actual pipe itself to really handle the extra flow, because that's what we originally designed to do. Even though we're going to increase the pressure, we're increasing it from something that was never originally capable of doing, the original design, does that make sense?
It was greater than what we've been putting into. And how old are those receiving pipes?
Karen, do you remember when you guys ultimately contracted it for my time, but do you remember when that force main was installed? I feel like it was 2009 to 2011 or something.
I think you're correct, but I can't say for sure.
I'd have to verify for sure, but that, it's relatively new as far as the system goes.
I'm clearly not a plumbing engineer person, so.
Great question, great question. Ultimately, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to actually, because right now, you have contracted capacity, I believe it's 15, so you have to do wet township, you have to actually store it more than you need to, which we always plan for the worst-case scenario. We can never prevent thousand-year event, but ultimately, we need all the tools and toolbox that you can get as close, and fortunately, this being as key component as it is, it's the main one that discharges all the sewage. We're being held back by that situation. It really comes down to, we're at the point where we either have to look at purchasing a pump of similar sizes there or upgrading, and ultimately, the price that we're getting back on some of these newer pump companies coming out, I believe the home was what we recommended to the voice of Cooper, you wouldn't really buy the pump that's in there for that price at the lower horsepower just to keep them what you're doing. So we feel like this is a rather, rather good project, a good user funds, besides the additional cost for installing the equipment. Any other questions? Am I certainly confused, anybody?
No, you're very good.
Okay, moving on, 14AD. Again, this asset is something you folks have owned since that force main was installed at, for 201. It was installed and then later removed because it was a faulty design. So the asset was put back behind your DPW polearm, and sits there with the tarp and then there ever since. These are, these are expensive assets. This is about $50,000 piece of the equipment, but right now, if you look at it, looks like a manhole, but inside, the key component is what they call vortex manholes, it's simple design, but it works beautifully. It's what you have at the discharge in 201 in Twin Brook. All that hydrogen sulfide we've talked about in the years past, it takes that hydrogen sulfides and oxidizes that hydrogen sulfide as it falls into vortex to a twisting motion, hence the vortex name. The hydrogen sulfide is then released, but the downdraft that's created there sucks that back into the actual water chain on the bottom, which is called a floater burner, and then spills out the top. They work beautifully because they are minimal maintenance and ultimately, no operational cost other than the initial capital expense. There's no chemicals to be added, but it completely solves the problem. We take the reeds from hydrogen sulfides into hundreds of parts of the zone to zero at Conover. They, it's a beautiful product, they're expensive, but you've got to have certain design criterias. And this goes back, Karen, this might even went back before you started, it might have been when Dan was here, but Prime Newhoff looked, well, actually, I think the project was with C2B, they looked at reinstalling this at the discharge of 208 down here at Webster and Drive. And if you remember back, and Drive had to collapse due to hydrogen sulfide. A lot of that is from the upstream project, 208, 209, et cetera, they're down by all of them, it's at the end of Old Road. The project was scrapping costs, I believe, back in time. We've since reevaluated where we could put it, we've worked with the new engineers that have been with you folks for a handful of years now, and they've set up the project. And I believe, I don't know if that was included in your pack or not, the cost estimate? And that was done by Prime Newhoff, the township engineers, which we feel is a great project, they updated it, and it could help solve a lot of problems downstream from the discharge of 208 into the order issues and hog pile as that sewage flows down. You're protecting all those assets, but ultimately, we're still seeing some of the results, as you see down Webster Road, we're looking at some of that stuff, the concrete pipe, those discharge, that hydrogen sulfide, again, starting to grow and some things, so this will help with a lot of that, and ultimately, use the asset that you have just sitting in the parking lot. Any questions on any of that?
Thank you.
Ms. Ryan.
Thank you for your time.
Both 201 and the projects for 201 and 208 will come back to you in the next meeting for action along with all such amendments.
Now, when you talk about budget amendments, you're talking about budget amendments to their budget or to our budget?
To our budget.
Okay.
Those are the ones.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. So now it'll be at 14E, which begins with Judy Gardy spoke about, the vaccination requirements for attendance. Supervisor Hill, okay.
Thank you, appreciate that. This has been an ongoing item of discussion with the seniors time of reopening recently. Prior to the reopening, the senior services advisory board did discuss this quite a bit. We had indicated to them at that time that I did not have the authority to require a vaccination for people coming to the center. What I can do is decide enough to wear a mask, which is what they're currently being required to do. I know there is some discussion and some dispute that people are not adhering to the mask mandate at all times. Our director, our coordinator, Brittany Matsumoto, is trying for us to monitor participants and make sure that unless they're eating and drinking, that they're wearing masks, and practicing correct hand hygiene, whether that be washing hands or using hand sanitizer. Where at senior centers, we call them digital health, is when people are participating in activities after lunch, whether that be card playing or other activity, where they may remove their mask, they were going to take a drink of something they have left over from lunch, and then they may not put their mask back up immediately. As you heard, former supervisor Paula Clark and Ms. Alan Washington were here a couple weeks ago, there is a desire by some that in order to come to the center, they would wish us to have a vaccine mandate, and I know that some of those people have reached out and written to some of you, Paula, I think I was included on that one, that she sent to all of you because she could not be here tonight. So I'm really looking to you for some discussion and some guidance on what you would wish to do with this matter.
Do we know how many people attend the senior center that aren't vaccinated?
We don't, we don't ask that question. What we do offer to them, what coordinator Matsumoto offered to them even before we opened back up, was the opportunity to secure a vaccination for them if they needed assistance with anyone. But no, we do not ask them if they're vaccinated, nor do we, at this time, we simply offer the ability to help them if they need help still to anyone.
Do we have the right to ask anybody if they're vaccinated?
I do not believe so. I believe that it's private information, we have this public information.
We do have the right to ask people if they're vaccinated. They don't have to tell us, but we have the right to ask.
We have the right to exclude them from access to facilities.
That's correct.
So.
Yes, trustee Amory.
Thank you. So I had a conversation with a couple community members over the past, I think, two years or so, one of which was, I made a very powerful argument that I have to say that I fully agree. And so I say this without having firsthand knowledge about exactly what happens in the senior center, but my understanding is that there are, our members are a community, let me, I think, two points. One is, we know, let me make three points.
Could you make one?
Number one, I, you as a board, I, I think we're all on the same page in terms of our understanding of the pandemic. We have honored the county emergency orders for meeting in person, not in person. And so I think that's, it's fair to say that's, we understand that there is, that coronavirus is a serious risk, and it's a serious risk for, especially for certain portions of our population. And so we have vulnerable individuals. Those vulnerable individuals vary in a variety of different ways in terms of pre-existing health conditions like diabetes, obesity, but also in terms of their age and senior status. And so we know that our senior services, seniors in our community are at elevated risk for complications related to the coronavirus. So with that, I think we should take seriously the health and safety of our seniors. So that's point one. Point, that's probably two points in there, but point one A and one B. Point two, I could do sub-points here. Point two is that my understanding, from what I've heard from members who, of the senior services center, people who attend, is that there are individuals who are vaccinated, and there are individuals who are unable to get vaccinated, who are, do not feel comfortable going to the senior services center, because there are individuals there who are unvaccinated, who indicate they're unvaccinated because they don't believe in it, and they're welcome to their personal beliefs, and then also are not disciplined in using their mask. And so, you know, looking at how people use the senior services center, of course, there's Bridge, Uker, but people go there to eat. When they're eating, they're not masked, right? When they're sipping on their drinks during Bridge games, they're not, you know, they pop the mask down, sometimes they forget to put it back up. So I personally, I feel that it is important for us to take seriously and to seriously consider creating a vaccination policy, to protect those individuals in our community who are vulnerable, and those who, those in our community that do take seriously the pandemic, take their health seriously. I don't want to serve individuals who flout the fact that we are members of a community at the expense of those individuals who want to be good members of our community. I'm sure there's another point. Maybe I say it another time.
Justine Rosengrenz, go ahead.
I've been around them people for a lot of years, and let me tell you, most of them are very headstrong, and they believe what they believe. And all you're going to do is keep people from coming there if you go ahead and mandate this, if you want to make them take a test to make sure they haven't got it, or whatever you want to do, and they're like, like you said, there are people that do not, cannot take it. The doctors told them not to do it because they, they cannot, their body will not work with it. And I just think that is a wrong thing to do for our seniors.
Question.
Oh, am I asking you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking, I'll ask you a question.
Yeah.
When you speak that they can't do that, but they still attend?
Yeah.
So we don't know then if they're asymptomatic or if they're symptomatic, because there hasn't been a test that's done. In other words, someone who says they can't do it because the doctor said, and I understand that completely, that they still attend the senior service or the senior center. So we don't know, we being whoever was at the senior center, have no clue whether that individual is infectious or not, for lack of a better way of putting it. In other words, if the doctor tells them they can't take.
COVID.
They can't take the injection, the shot, because of whatever reason they have, but they still attend.
Yeah.
How do we know, or how does anybody know if they don't continue to wear a mask, that they're not infectious to everyone who's there?
Anybody, even if you have the shots, can pass it on each other. And if you are.
That's low, but yes.
Among, it's, it's a pretty good percentage.
Breakthrough for that percentage.
Zero or seven percent.
I think it's, I was going to say it's still in the single digit.
It's some single digit, but.
But it's still a possibility, and you're going to, so you've got the people that have been vaccinated, are going to blame the people that didn't get the shots because they passed it around, and they're the ones who are spreading it. You're thinking.
Everybody's been spread it.
But the chances of someone who's had a shot spreading it is lower than the one who hasn't. So I guess I'm not sure I'm understanding, if you can't have the shot, why you would attend?
They want the camaraderie of these other people. These people, a lot of them are living alone, they need each other.
So you think they'd be okay submitting to an exilum each time they come?
Who's going to pay for that?
Well, that's the question, that's, that's where I'm.
Most of these, a lot of these people cannot afford to pay for the tests unless it's free.
So that's something the senior center needs to look at as the expense. Is that what, would that be?
I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know. That's what I.
Oh, they cost, I see them at Myers. The ones that they sell are three, three tests for $9.99.
So that's almost.
I see them at the pharmacy.
So if they come once, but they come every day?
Well, every third day.
Okay.
Every other day, they, they only run in one of the Friday.
So one kit would be good for one week? Okay.
We have about 55 people coming, average, per day.
But we don't know how many of those are vaccinated. Okay. Never been easy, never been easy. No, it's not. Yes, because.
I'm very glad we're having this conversation, and I certainly, as one board member, don't have all the answers, but some organizations are requiring testing.
That's true.
If you don't have the vaccine. Well, that's, that's, that's an option we may have to look at.
Well, that's what I was asking.
We may have to look at that option. Personally, I don't like to tell old people what to do with their life, or anybody what to do with their medical care.
Medical care.
Okay. But that doesn't necessarily mean that's the way the board's going to call with this. And I fully understand that. But I'm glad we're having the discussion, because without discussion, we won't come up with any solid answers as to what we might do to help this population. So that's, that's, that's where I'm at.
Trustee Amory.
So I think at the end of the day, the township and the direction of the board operates a venue in which vulnerable people come in for support, and sometimes they may not need those supports, but sometimes those supports are needed. And sometimes they may not need those supports, but sometimes those supports are needed by members of our community. We as a board, I need to keep in mind the health, safety, welfare of these individuals. And, well, you know, I would love to, you know, talk about personal liberty and the ability to, you know, for people to make, have self-governance. I think that's important, but at the same time, you're in a position where, if we, you know, using the terminology that this new individual brought to us, worst-case scenario, what happens if we have an outbreak? What happens if they trace that outbreak to the senior center? What is, how does that position us? How do we sleep at night, knowing that we could have had the position, could have made the decision about putting some structures in place to support our seniors? Now, I think we're all on the same page where we don't, you know, we don't want to exclude individuals from being offered services. So if we do decide to go down the route of required vaccination policy, maybe at the same time, we think about how can we build something in place where we have meal delivery or something like that for those individuals who are unable to, or unwilling to be vaccinated? I just, I think it's incredibly important, and I will stand firm in that, this is one of those things that needs to be seriously considered.
Question. As deftly telling what you're saying, I couldn't agree more with what you're saying. The question has to come up is, they obviously need the interaction.
Yes.
Okay, this is, this is what one is saying. So you can't necessarily exclude them if you want to look at their mental health, which is part of what it is that we need to look at with senior center. So you've got two populations going here. You've got one that's vaccinated and one that can't be vaccinated, however, they still attend the activities.
There's a third population. So there's the vaccinated population, there's individuals who, based on medical reasons, are unable to be vaccinated, at this point. There's a third population, individuals from religious beliefs, sincerely held religious beliefs, will not get vaccinated.
But they're still unvaccinated.
And then you've got the fourth group are the people who refuse to get vaccinated. For a large percentage.
Oh, no, understand that. So you actually have two groups here, one is vaccinated, one that isn't, regardless of the number at umbrella, the reasons for not being vaccinated. So I guess my question for the board would be, what's the cost of being able to make sure that everybody is secure in what they're doing? Now, I don't know, how do the seniors, because I don't go, and I'm 73 years old, so I don't, I fall into that category that Joe's talking about. But if you, if you have them there and they're interacting, how do the others respond to that, who are vaccinated? I mean, that's an acceptance? So there's not, they don't, okay, you don't know either.
I see there's a comfort level in the peer group. I see them all, most of them that, even before COVID, are still sitting and mingling with the people that they.
So they know they're not vaccinated.
Before COVID. So it's whether they know or not whether somebody is vaccinated or not. I don't know if they're having those conversations. I just see them grouping as they did previously with those that they're comfortable with and have a relationship with.
So we'd be pointing out then who's vaccinated and who isn't by doing that? So that's like scarlet letter that's on their forehead, they're not vaccinated, so, I mean, that's, I don't know.
The same deal is people getting a free meal. They don't want nobody to know who's getting it, just because they're, three people are gonna point their fingers at them.
Just how rich.
The simplest way of addressing whether there's some sort of stigma attached to being allowed to go into the senior centers is if you create a policy, which is any policy that's ever created related to the requirement of COVID, I'm thinking of Michigan State University.
Sure.
You have your policy, either you're vaccinated or you need certain limited exemptions.
Exactly.
And then those determinations are being made behind closed doors. Remember, is authorized to do the determination of vaccination status or unlimited exemption. And then those individuals are allowed to go in without any discussion or a badge or flag. But those who don't show up, either made a choice to not show up, or, you know, understand that you're not able to take part in those services or have to take part in alternative services.
No, and I understand that. And in this circumstance, you would know, only because you would separate that individual from the rest of the group to test them. So you would know they weren't. Not that that's a bad thing, because I'm not so sure that's a bad thing.
You would know that they were either vaccinated or they might have an exemption, that's it.
Which means they're not vaccinated.
What, religious exemption, health exemption, or?
No, I understand that, but, so I guess from my standpoint, it would be nice to know what the cost would be if one, you said at Myers, it's how much for?
It's a pack we received, and I asked the guy, Kamala's wife at the time was thinking about getting.
That's what I was thinking.
And there was a set of three, and it was $9.99. So I was writing in front of the counter.
See, $10. So if, if we had a deal with Myers that says they'll give us 10% off?
And I wanted to conclude the conversation about going the detailed route of testing. As we probably want to contact our county health department to find out what options are available and if there's municipal coverage, if we're gonna go down the route of.
Well, that's the question. No, and that's the question.
There's a number of different alternatives for, you know, in terms of standard days or, you know, mobile delivery, you know, separate room. I don't know what the facilities are, so I can't determine that, but certainly a, you know, people should be either thinking about, do we have a policy, vaccination requirement?
Right.
And if not, what can we do proactively to ensure that the health and safety of our seniors?
No, that's, that's true, except that the population, I think, if what I'm understanding that you're talking about, probably doesn't have the ability to get to somewhere to do that. So they'd have to come to the senior center.
That's the other leg of this.
Yeah.
I mean, I know Karen had discussed that, and we have proactively reached out to every senior who's attended our senior services center, offered all services, and we can reinforce that.
Okay.
In fact, we can do all sorts of things. We can create an incentive program, you get 50% off all meals for the next three months if you get vaccinated and you're unvaccinated status.
But if they can't.
We can't be black and white with this, we can actually be creative and supportive.
No, and I think that's absolutely correct, as long as the criteria is understood. In other words, you know, they're not as bold as what they'd like to be, and whether or not, you know, we can get creative to say a 50% off, wouldn't make any difference to me if my doctor said not to do it. You could give me 100% off and I wouldn't do it because my doctor said so.
If your doctor said you have an exemption, it would be an odd issue.
No, it's not, apparently not. No, that's what I'm not understanding.
That's what, I think that's what she's asking, is could you still go to the center?
Because they are.
I mean, the answer, I would say the answer is yes. The purpose of mandating a vaccination policy is to ensure that everyone there is supported. We know that there are individuals throughout our community who are unable to be vaccinated. That's why the higher the proportion of the individuals who are vaccinated, we're doing, you know, that herd immunity, we're doing that not just for our own well-being, it's our community's well-being.
That's correct.
But I don't know, and I may be wrong, because I don't think that former supervisor Clark has ever been excluded anyone. I mean, she happens to be one of the most inclusive people that I generally know, but she's saying like, I won't go if you aren't vaccinated. I think she means, even if you can't get a vaccination, I probably still don't want to subject myself to you because you could be, you know, spreading COVID.
I don't, I can't.
I can't, and that's why, but I'm just thinking like, even if people, yeah, just if people are.
So these would be elements of a vaccination policy, and I think we would need to, if we go down the route of looking into developing a policy, we probably want to look at what our model policies for other senior centers in other communities.
I actually tried to, in preparation for this, try to find some, and I could not find any from Michigan. I didn't go further out, but I was not able to locate any from Michigan.
So if we continue the conversation, I mean, I think we can reach out to our Mid-Michigan Health Department, maybe they would be willing to present to us, to have for this conversation, about what would and would not be standard or recommended by our county health department, as well as our state health department.
I could support that conversation.
My lines go on here, go ahead.
I could support that direction.
The direction to?
I'm having the county and state health department come in and say, these are the policies that are working. I could support that direction, get some help.
So there's part of it.
I just want to make sure that we're not gonna discriminate against anybody that lives here somehow.
Exactly.
That need these services.
Well, that's, that's why I was asking, that's why it's not an easy yes or no kind of issue, because you've got people, the doctors are saying, don't do it, but they're still engaged, that can be a problem, but if they're accepting, because they don't know whether they're vaccinated, the assumption is everybody's vaccinated, and that's not necessarily true either, if you've got people who are there, so it's not an easy, there's nothing easy about it. So you're looking, what you're saying, Joe, if I'm understanding, these requirements, that's what we're talking about, and that's what we need to either look at. But what's the direction, the direction is to go to the health department?
Yeah, the direction is to have the health department come in and speak to us about what we might do.
Okay.
They're the experts.
Does that sound reasonable?
Kind of ideal, what's more, not in other places, or cares what the government.
Dwyer doesn't have a senior center?
They have a congregate meal site.
Yes.
At the Catholic Church on Dwyer Road, but I believe the congregate meal sites are still not open.
Okay.
According to my understanding, the tri-county office is unaging.
Because I know Lansing has.
The meal program that we were getting here out front that people took.
Yes.
Car in every Thursday was in place of congregate meal programs, and so people were picking up a week worth of fast meals, similar to meals on meals, and then they couldn't come out and pick something up, meals were being delivered to them.
So what we're finding out is that if they're the upper tier, it's okay?
Well, they were just driving.
I mean, they're driving through, could be the.
Getting the last foot in their car, so.
Right, so COVID could be on their hands, could be on their clothes, could be whatever. So they're saying, I mean, that is a little extreme, but.
But they were supplying food to them, so.
Because it is airborne, okay. No, I think that makes sense, so if you reach out.
Is, for our next meeting, you would like at least the county health department to come in, if not, in addition to a member of the state health department, if I'm able to obtain someone. And during that time, those two weeks, there will be no action, no change in the senior center. At this time.
Okay. So if you can't find somebody in person, could they submit it in writing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if we're gonna get the state health director, but we might.
No, that's what I'm.
So.
Yeah, good luck. But that's what I mean, if they can put it right, okay. Does that sound agreeable? Okay. All right, so our next one is duration and funding policy under items of discussion? I think that's the treasure.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, first of all. Long story short, obviously, week after, week after last, we had our auditor here, we had our audit here, and I do speak from him to him quite often, some different policies and whatnot. But in the meantime, it came to my attention, right after that meeting, that there was a 911 call, as township here, the women to the 911 center, had dealt with our township in the form of a potential missing table.
That's correct, that's, I was going to mention that.
And it was.
An official complaint's been made.
An official complaint.
We have a security problem.
I took and researched this with our auditor, and he suggested that I hand out to all of the board members and review this and remind them of our policy of donations, fundraisers, or loans, which was adopted back in March 2nd of 2015. And actually, in the event, this is what my concern is, anytime there's any legal action, anytime there's any law that's been broken, anything has to do with the township, I'm obligated to contact and talk to the auditor about it. That's how we get the opinion we get, because I'm very transparent about that. And he suggested we read this, and, which I did, and we went over it. They have all our policies, they're familiar with them, did a go over them with me. And this is where we ended up with this. In the event that there was a missing table, that there is a missing table that's not here, obviously, it wasn't properly vetted, and it did not go through the proper channels to be here to begin with.
Okay.
And that's very evident, if you read this, I've got mine highlighted, I went over it today with several people, and they talk about this in this thing. When it talks about that township, they're talking about this board. This board has the authority, they can invent this stuff, this stuff goes through the treasurer's department, obviously, because it has the potential of anything to be a capital asset of the township, which is properly vetted. If this wasn't, if it's loaned, then there needs to be written documentation between the person who's loaning it to the township and the township to make sure that it's not home, and that we can be back. So therefore, I talked to her after talking to him, because legally, I don't know if he's ever been funded to use the table here, and that was my concern, because.
Then I'll do a donation, a fundraiser.
It's very simple. If you read the policy, you'll see the actual stuff, that it doesn't have to be money, that it's, it's not, anything has to do with the township, the main stuff is donated, whether it's materials.
It's never been donated.
Pardon me?
Never been donated.
Then what was it, what was the loan?
It was for the use of, yes.
It can't be here, but this policy right here, and they say it can't be here.
Okay.
This is the point I'm making here. The point I'm making here is the 911 call that you made to the missing table that got presented here, is if there is a table, it wasn't vetted properly. And this falls back into the audit, but I'm gonna get that question, once again, here I go again, I get another wonderful question at the end of the year, they're gonna say, okay, what did you have, and we have legal things upon our township? Well, we have a missing table, the night you were here, that's the reason why you weren't able to use the podium, and everything is all such an uproar. I mean, that's where we go with this. I'm not, I don't leave this stuff unattended, I question it, I identify it, and I bring it back, and that's what I'm doing to the board members. Right here it is, I don't expect you to agree with it, I don't even care if.
No, you don't, but I have a question for you. We have no policy in this township, as far as I know, of understanding what we have as equipment or not. So because of, no, there's nothing that says that computer in there belongs to that town.
That's a whole dis- dis- dis statement on your part, you're not very familiar with Gatsby at all. Back several years ago, when we had the Gatsby 34, you went to here, you asked us, tagged everything you have here, and you have everything here, this here is an asset of the township within a dollar range, it depends on a dollar range. This policy was written in 2015, and if you read this thing, it does not specifically say table, but it talks about material. It doesn't say that this other, it doesn't have to be cash, it doesn't have to be money, it doesn't have to be a donation in the way of money, it talks about the piece of, whatever it is, I have no idea, that's missing. But all I'm saying is, I did my due diligence by identifying this and turning it in, turning it in, and telling them what it is, just the same as everybody else did. So that's my report. I gave everybody a copy of this, and it was suggested that the board members maybe review their policy, if they want to change it, if they want to add to it, to put something else in it, then the board could do that, and make it more explicit, that if that's what you want, that's fine, that's actually be done, but I did what I was supposed to do here, because this was, this was a legal threat to the township.
Oh, there's a question, this is security breach. But tell me again, that you gave everybody a copy of what you have?
You got your work package, it's in your work package.
And which one was it? And which one was it, donation and funding policy?
Today's board package.
Today's board package.
I didn't give it to you.
Who?
The township package had, is in the true, the super...
No, I didn't have that.
Huh?
Some packet.
Well, maybe...
I'm not going to argue with you about it, I just talked to you...
I'm not asking for an argument, I just asked...
He searched it, and if there is a table here, then it should have been vetted, according to our policy.
Well, then, I, so...
You can donate something to this township no more than I can, although you need proper funds.
I'm going to tell you right now, there's a security breach in that township, that security breach, whether it's vetted or not, doesn't make any difference, it really doesn't, doesn't make... Go ahead, Jason.
So, I mean, that's a pretty strong accusation.
Yes, it is, it's a very strong accusation.
Did you actually look for the table, is it in your office?
Yes, you were in here, you knew nothing about it, I touched it, are we going to go through this now, before we even finish?
You're making an accusation that there's a security...
No, Steve made the accusation that the table that was taken, the security issue that was taken, is something because it wasn't vetted, which means that every single item that we have in this township, from A to Z, has been vetted, so that's what, that's basically what he's saying, and I understand, so for me, vetting means that you have a tag on it, that says, this is Bass Township's property, if there's no tag on it, which as far as we know, we don't even know what we have.
The states are right here pretty plain, I mean, if you read this thing, it's pretty plain, if there's any kind of donation, fundraising activity shall follow proper accounting protocols, or it needs to the treasurer's department, it also states that all donations shall be property of bad chartered townships, in situations where items are loaned rather than gifted to the township, they should be in a written statement of the intended loan.
And I think you're comparing the Apple storages, and that's okay.
No, I'm talking very simply, I proposed what went on here, I was notified that there was a threat to the township, was there a threat to the township?
There is, there is, a security breach.
And I did my part, the treasurer's department, right here, it says, are you in this pool? What am I supposed to do, and I did my piece.
So if the chair is stolen, as a security breach?
I didn't say anything.
No, 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 that's what...
I said, there was a table that was missing, that was...
So there's a chair missing, right, let's do the chair, see, no, it doesn't hold water to me, but that's okay.
That's fine.
What?
You violated policy, that doesn't hold water, you don't understand what that is either. I made a statement, I did what the auditor wanted to do, we're on the table, we're here, I did my job.
Good for you, donation fundraising policy...
I have no respect for people doing their job, and that's the bottom line, but...
God, I wish that were the case, so donation fundraising policy is what you brought to the attention, which by the way, I'll check, oh, I'll check.
Yeah, I'll be on it in the meeting.
Thank you.
She doesn't have a copy or a package?
She does.
How can everybody have a copy and not have one?
It's right after our minutes.
Okay, thank you, I'll check again. Okay, so we've done donation and fundraising policy, items for action, now we're going to get into room discussion, room configuration for the Bass Charter Township Board trustee.
I was asked, I was asked for the last meeting, on the agenda, and she gets back, so it's over there.
And here it is, so this is items for action, oh, okay, Ryan.
Have we settled that this is the layout of the room?
I don't know, have we, as far as I'm concerned, but that's...
So what we have here is how we're moving forward?
This is what I proposed, yes.
This is not what you proposed, but I'm asking, is this the way it's going to be?
I can sit wherever I sit, right?
I'm not asking about where you're sitting, I'm asking about the layout of the room.
I'm not understanding, you're going to have to help me out.
Do you see where the podium is?
Yep.
Is that where the podium's going to be forever?
As far as I'm concerned, or as far as ability to be, so you're asking, no.
Okay, then we haven't agreed on it?
No, no, that's right, this is out here.
Hey, I just asked you like three times if we've agreed on it, and you told me yes, so I'm confused.
No, I'm confused.
I know.
Yeah, so why is this, yes, trustee Emily G.
Thank you, I'd like to make a two-part motion, so I move...
Two?
I move to authorize that the seating configuration of the boardroom is the sole responsibility of the clerk position, and that the physical space organization of the boardroom falls under the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion, and I have it, tie your motion again, you're saying that the superintendent, I'm understanding, so Karen, she would come in and tell you where you're going to sit?
No.
Okay, all right, so help me out then.
So, we have three rules that I see, one pertains to how board we improvise, so we have the physical space, so we have, we've entrusted, we've traditionally entrusted the superintendent and the DPW with the space configuration in terms of the equipment, the types of chairs, the placement of the chairs, in fact, every podium, the television, what's on the walls, right, so the first part of the motion is to formalize the authority of the superintendent to make decisions about the physical layout of the board. The second is, when it comes to the seating arrangements of the board, that we authorize the clerk to determine the best seating arrangements per, that the clerk's purview, and I'm not a clerk, so I can't say what decisions go into that, but probably the order is important when it comes to voting and like, whatever the reasons, I think that our prior clerk had that authority, and I'd like to see that that authority remain within our current, so I'd like to formalize a resolution to support that.
I have a question. The two conflict each other, first of all, the superintendent has the authority to mechanically put the room in order, okay, then you're saying, your second part would be, the clerk then tells you where to sit, because that makes it easier for her, so you're acquiescing your authority, nothing personal, Brenda knows this, then you're acquiescing your authority or your ability to sit where you want to sit, knowing full well, you always sit on the end, Joe sits there, Steve sits in the middle, you know, that kind of thing, I mean, we understand that, but if she decided, you're not going to sit there anymore, so here, that's nothing that you can say about that, or if she said, Joe, sorry, you can't sit there anymore, you're going to have to come over here and sit, so I'm not quite sure I'm understanding...
I draw no authority from where I sit, right, so let me give you a different concrete example, say if there's another emergency order that comes down, or say we have a fire in the corner or something like that, and there has to be a reconfiguration...
Reconfiguration, okay.
To accommodate something, right?
Okay.
So the superintendent works with DPW to figure out, what is the best way to rearrange the room, and maybe there's little pods of tables, chairs, whatever, so it then, I thought, I mean, ideally, there would be a conversation between the clerk and the superintendent, say, hey, we had to do this because of some specific reason, our clerk would then say, okay, great, let me think about this, and I think that we should do this arrangement so that we can best represent ourselves and communicate to our public, again, one very, you know, specific example, but that's what I'm suggesting, not that there is a unilateral decision by the supervisor or someone to make a decision because it makes them feel better, that there's more of a principle reason, as well as this is what we've done in the past, in terms of the authority of these individuals.
I think that sounds ideal, I think that's what makes sense, only if, suppose I walked in, or I walked in, and he said, I bet, no, that's not going to work for me, I need to use the bathroom too much, I'm going to sit where you're sitting, so he would need to go to the clerk to say, I'm going to raise my hand, can I go to the bathroom because I'm going to sit on this end? I'm not sure I'm understanding that authority, I'm not sure that I get that authority.
We should always sit in the same spot, the trustees are going to be at the end, we would all be in the middle, or in the center.
Yeah, but again, suppose something comes up, so what the discussion is then, you would go to L, and you'd go to Jason and say, you know, guys, we're going to have to switch you around because of health reasons.
I'm going to hug your neck, Joe.
For whatever reason, I'm saying, I guess for me, communication has always been important, whether you like it or not, communication has always been something that's really important, I find it really difficult to assume that I, one, need to raise my hand, or two, that I'm being permanently seated as I was in school, that this is my desk and my chair, and this is where I always have to be, I'm not sure I understand that totally, and it has absolutely nothing to do with you personally, it has everything to do with the idea... I hope you're enjoying yourself, but the idea of being able to sit where it is, I would not try to have all of you sit where you're sitting, because I don't want to be the main purpose that people sit and look to say, that's the superintendent, that's the supervisor, that's the superintendent, that's the supervisor, is that making any sense? Okay, let me try it again, I'm going to one second, I'll give it to you. When in fact, and Brenda, for her reasoning, has nothing to do with Brenda personally, so you laugh, but everyone laughs, she knows that, she's secure enough to know that that's not, I'm not pointing my finger at her personally, saying, Brenda said that, she knows that, she's secure enough to understand that, so the position that the clerk would have of being able to explain where you're going to be...
Supervisor, how I understood what you said.
Oh.
What you said doesn't make sense.
Well, then...
That's the clarity that I have in this situation.
I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense to you, but I'm not sure you would want it to make sense, I'm not sure that that's an open line to do so, but, I'm sorry, trust me, Liz, because he was next, we need to...
You worked in the legislature at one point, right?
Oh, yeah, a decade worth.
So when they had the first day of the legislature, and everyone ran in to claim their dust, how did that work out?
Oh, no, they were appointed.
Okay.
And nobody sat their butt in their chair, nobody, I found that out early, I first stayed there, nobody's butt sits in that chair but the legislator who's there for that district, and it was determined by their districts.
Thank you.
Welcome, there's a difference, Joe.
Just, this may help you.
Okay.
In my time at that township for about forty years, the clerk has always had the discretion of asking people to sit at certain places, now it was the same clerk for forty years, but she always had the discretion to make the meetings run better, if she had to move somebody around, if somebody wasn't there, she always had that discretion, this is not new.
No, it shouldn't be new.
It isn't.
But my question with this, now we're saying, this is different, now we're saying, she's going to mandate that you sit there, that's the restructuring, yes, she's always had that to run, and hopefully, with Brenda being new, new ideas are coming in, and new changes are taking place, which is what should happen, I don't think anybody questions that the changes that are taking place shouldn't be done, they should always be done, by the way Kathy McQueen did it for, what, three decades, four decades, and everybody went along with it at that time, so I guess I'm saying, when you're trying to mandate that this is going to happen, of course the clerk has always had that option, but that's not what you're saying.
That's what you're saying, isn't it?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Of course, that's what you're saying, but according to what we're saying here, it says room configuration for Bass Township Board Trustees, meetings, so you're mandating that, and Jason initially started it with his, which you can't have two, you can have one, but we can vote on different ones if you want, that your superintendent has the configuration, and that if you want to put it that way, you're mandating that that be the way, that's the way it's always been, you're mandating that the clerk's position be the one to explain where it is that you're going to sit, but if it's always been that way, I'm not sure I'm understanding why it needs to be mandated, because if I can sit where I'm sitting, I'm sitting here.
Maria, it just goes to you being difficult, because everybody else is sitting where I've asked them to sit, and nobody's complained, I asked you to sit here, and you told me no.
Mm-hmm.
You're just being difficult.
Okay, that's, that's what you're saying.
I call for the question.
You called, questioned, and we need to vote, so we need to vote on the call question.
What was the motion?
So the motion is a two-part motion, the first is that we authorize superintendent Hildebrandt to oversee the physical layout of the boardroom, and then the second part of that motion is that we authorize our clerk in a formal way to oversee the seat arrangements of board members, with the physical arrangement that is determined by the superintendent.
So you have two motions going, first motion, yes, he does, you're going to combine those two?
Yes, it's a two-part motion, it's just one motion.
One motion.
So your one motion is requiring that superintendent set up the room, the second part of your one motion is that the clerk, you're solidifying, maybe that's a better way of putting it, they've always had those authorities, when this clerk, when Brenda says, I'm being difficult, it's not, she can't mandate, but now she do will, so I'm going to understand that, so as long as everybody else understands that that's what the motion is.
The motion is to formalize the authority over two aspects of board operations, such that, so that the way that we have done this in the past, the past forty plus years, is how we'll move forward, so that we don't end up in situations where, as in the last meeting, where you awkwardly placed yourself, and then I demanded that the clerk sit next to you, and then the treasurer, treasurer sits next to her, that was a bizarre situation, it was uncomfortable.
We're going to be in danger, no.
So we're moving pieces in place to limit the liability that you are to the operation and governance of this board.
Yeah, yeah, listen, I'm going to tell you right now, mandating is something that's very difficult, just because you've done it for the last thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred years, doesn't mean that it needs to be that way, so if I'm being trying to be difficult, then you can go ahead and say that, I don't see it as difficult, but that's, that's just me.
I call for the question.
You can call for the question, so the vote is, the discussion is...
The procedure says when you call for the question, you vote.
You have to be careful, you bad.
I give you a chance.
I don't want to have to pick you up, you're the one who's...
I have a friendly amendment before you do this, if the board will give me the latitude to be able to make this a friendly amendment, to the latter one, of the clerk's ability over where we're going to sit, would everybody be happy if we made a friendly amendment that Marie has stated that she wants to sit on the end of the table, and that she can continue to sit on the end of the table?
I think that's a wonderful friendly amendment.
Would everybody be satisfied with that, Brenda, would you be happy with that?
I'd be happy with that.
Then what's the issue?
Would that move this process along?
Well, anything would move this process along, I would hope, so now we have a motion, you want to amend the motion?
I want to amend the last part of the motion, where the clerk is, what was the word you used, mandated, where everybody was going to sit, that everybody's seat stays the same as what it is tonight, as we sit here right now, that's my...
And you're going to ask Ryan.
That's my friendly amendment.
Well, Ryan, you got anything to say on that one?
I have nothing to say about that.
So, what we've got then, we've got a motion, we've got a... We've got to amend that motion.
No, we don't.
Then we're going to vote for your motion.
So treasurer, wiswasser, I just.
You pointed out that you have to agree with that.
Yeah, I don't agree with it.
So then it's not.
But I do believe that there's an opportunity that Supervisor Howe can have conversation with our clerk about her preferences for where she sits, and it would be up for the clerk to make the decision.
It's the same thing.
Not quite the same thing.
It's the same thing.
No, it's not the same thing.
I call for the question.
Yes. All right, so if you're going to call for the question, then we need a vote on the call for question. That is in Robert's rules.
We have to vote. We go to vote for the motion. We don't vote to vote his vote.
He, he called the question.
That means that he would.
That means he would like to have the vote taken care of. So the question is, he's already made the motion to call the question.
The question is the vote.
He's calling for us to vote on the motion that is currently on the floor.
You're going to send that one to me too?
If you'd like, sure.
Actually, if you read Robert's rules order, when you call for a vote, you have to vote on the call.
Yeah, I can pull it up at any time.
I know, I know. I'm the same.
Vote and vote on whether or not you're going to call or not. In this case, this is a little prime example of that. If you read Robert's rules order, it'll tell you that you have to take a call. When you call for a vote, then the board has to immediately stop right down in there.
Yes.
You have to take, the board has to have a call to vote on whether or not you're going to call a motion. And it votes and it calls a motion, then you take, you move forward, the treasurer, the board takes and moves the motion forward, and you call it, and it's voted out. That's how that is worded in Robert's rules order.
Which means that you have, you're like.
Means I did a lot of reading, so sleep after that.
Yeah, I'm joking about it. You told me about it. All right. Any more discussion?
You can't have discussion.
Yeah, have discussion.
He already called the votes.
You did call the votes.
Somebody's got to call the board, but you're going to vote on it. And then we move on to call the vote on the motion.
Okay. So Mr. Wiswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Tumbliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmerikey?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll vote on the motion.
Thank you. I know. That's, now we can vote on the motion. And the motion, it, no, yep, hey. The motion is, what? You have to reword because you made the motion.
We just voted on my motion.
Well, we only had the question.
Let's call it a question. You guys could all read this, and you could get a little bit more up on this. I've been to schools, I've been to all this stuff, I've learned all this, and I probably would be on this one.
So you're happy on it.
The motion is a two-part motion, a single motion, to authorize the superintendent to oversee the physical structure of boardroom, and to authorize the clerk to oversee the placement of board members within that space.
Second.
Jason, second. Ryan, second. Mr. Elmerikey?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Tumbliss?
Yes.
And so that's a five to, five to one, six to one. Thank you. I keep forgetting how many people we have. All right, we are going for items for action. B is a vote, B. The agreement for services of Baker Tilly for 2021 sewer rate study.
Thank you. Steve, would you like to start or would you like to start?
I'll literally prepare, but I won't.
Why don't you throw that jump, but?
It's like buying a little.
Here, I'll start, then you can dump it. So Treasurer Wiswasser and I met last week with Andy Campbell of Baker Tilly, which was previously Onbond Associates. I mention that because they did our previous rate studies, and so most of you might be familiar with Onbond Associates. We did it on August 2nd. So we discussed the upcoming project at SCUMA, which is being conducted by Manu Yurjane, who are currently designing that as Director of Operations. Brad Gersky came to us last time and told us about. We're looking at, I believe, Mr. Wiswasser indicated, a $3.8 million financial obligation to conduct that work at SCUMA. So we met with Mr. Campbell to explore options and to take a look at our financial standing currently, as well as discuss taking on additional money so that we could purchase additional capacity at SCUMA. So after that meeting, we received an agreement. And part of that agreement was the school report, which I included for you all here. And then he has requested a great deal of documentation that mostly Treasurer Wiswasser will provide to him. And I can support him in any way I can to do that, so that he can do a rate study and determine the best way for us to raise the funds to conduct this work and purchase more capacity.
Let me go over this.
No, go ahead.
Is that right? Is that there?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
He would like to continue the party.
Well, that's what you.
Want me to add this?
You're on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, what, whether a rate study consists up of all you who have involved in a rate study, it consists up of just a few things. Well, here on the second page, historic operation expenses, budget information, three years of audits for budgets, which this is all online, and our continuing disclosure, which we had had earlier in the year here, what we deal with. While the first things we talked about, what we do is refunding of bonds. Refunding of bonds is no different than refinancing a mortgage of your house or your business or anything else you have. We do have one set of current bonds that we've come to here in November, and they can be refunded, and there's substantial savings to be made on them that takes an, helps your cash flow out, shortens up your timelines, and makes things move a little smoother. He did mention to us, we're going to talk to our bonding agent, or our bonding agent that we use is Benzinsky Company. They do, Onbond does bolts, they do the analytics, plus they do the, the, the bond council stuff. But we're, we're going to, we're going to actually talk to Benzinsky about refunding our bonds when we're more, we already paid them. We paid them for our, in dealing with disclosure reports, so it makes sense to ask them about refunding bonds and when and what would be the best time to do that. They'll do a test here. You may have a copy that you're giving every year. The last rate study we did was an analytic study. And what it does is it talks about the, the cost and what the, how our rates should go up each year to meet our cash flow needs and what our cash flow is. Ironically, where we're at right now, if you look at that study, our cash flow is at its lowest peak it's going to be over the last 10 years right now, because we have had a lot of past infrastructure or sales or things. Karen, I talked about this today, I don't know, but counts, isn't so much the RUs you get from the homes, the single-family homes you get built, but with, you have apartment buildings and things like that that you use $200 or $300 RUs a thing, that adds up pretty quick. If you get $200, $300,000 in the sewer fund, it makes, makes a big difference, and it helps pay the freight for everything that needs to be done if you want to do it for the matter. All this stuff will be looked at in the rate study. The customer base will be looked at. They'll look at the actual, we know there's a bonding. They'll look at the actual taxable value of the community, what the, what the iconic, the outlook is for the, for the community, whether we're forecasting, whether we're growing, or we're projecting, and what we're doing and everything in that sense. That's what a rate study does for you. A rate study comes back, and it tells you, when you're all set and done, it tells you what your cash flow is, and how much cash flow you'll have to meet your needs. And it will do this. At this project, for the $16 million project, or the authority, we talked a little bit today, tonight, about, we talked about the fact that whether we have ownership or whether we have, we pay on process. This project will be pretty well entirely built out, the $16 million on process. That's huge. And what that means is they use 27. What was the number? 27.8% or something. I like, I like wave numbers. I like to go with even numbers. So they, they're going to use, we're going to pay for 28% of that $16 million, basically, when we get ready to finally up to make the payment for the senior to do whatever way we're going to do it, whether we take and jump on board with the sewer authority and three other constituent municipalities, or we all choose to go through the SRF, which is the sewer fund, revolving fund. And the state has, or whether it's more cost efficient for us to bring our own money to the table and bond what we traditionally have done in the past, and pay our share of profit. Doesn't matter, we're going to pay it either way. But this way, we can all win it, so that's the way we're doing this. The sewer revolving fund, if I'm not mistaken, is a pretty cheap thing, and it's kind of sensitive. I think it's 1.84% on the bond number. Our bonds are pretty amazing, what, what they'll, the rates we can get with them. So it bears us to do our diligence to do, and look into this and test it both ways and see which way it is. The thing about it is, if we commit right now, when Baker Tilly told us, he's good enough to do this, if we commit right now, and we, and we with the municipalities, there isn't hope on that. There's a timeline on that where we can choose to take. And Joe, that's our effort. We don't want to, as we get closer to the time to actually do the project, if we decide that our rate study comes back better, but we can lock in the 1.84% right now if we don't. These are the things you hire these people for. It isn't cheap. They have a bonus $12,000, but it very well may save you hundreds of thousands of dollars before you're done. Did this several times. You guys done it twice, maybe three times. I guess twice, maybe while I was gone. They talked about the expansion. The last one you did was, was the big expansion you did when you went around the Z property, and you went down Hall Road, that pipe you talked about, but then the fourth main pipe, that's what we do. That was the one you did in 2013A, I believe it was. That's the 13A bond. You have a 13 bond in 2013, and 13A, that's the 13A bond. But that's what we do. We refunded in 2018 some bonds that was older, and that was, we refinanced them. We had a significant savings. And the one that's ready to be done again here is, is, I believe, the 2013 bond, is the one that's ready to be, to be done as well. So we got an analyze. We'll bring you back information. The only problem is we've got $12,000 to find out why. $11,707 is what they cost. It's a lot of money well spent. Mr. Andy Campbell is a resident of Bad Sherre Township. Your money's staying at Bad Sherre Township. He lives out here, out of the sewer district, kind of over the road. I, I gotta be honest with you. I always worked with another fellow by the name of Tom Kracyak, who was always there, who had worked with before. And he, he worked with us the last time. Tom's, like a lot of people, he didn't know where he's slowed down and made me think about retired. But Andy Campbell's a good guy, and he'll, he'll do a good job for us.
And at the same time that we are doing this rate study with Baker Tilly, Brad at SCUMA will be putting a letter in, a letter of intent to apply for the SRF, the state revolving fund, so that we get our name in the hat for consideration, and then we can continue. So right now, we have the busted book roll. So we can move forward with SCUMA and you, an analysis of our own funding at this time.
We would make a payment, and that's the only thing that scares me just a little bit, is they don't tell you exactly. The SCUMA board will vote on this, and we get two votes in this. But what, this is the scary part for me, for cash flow, is the SCUMA board will determine how we're going to make our payment if we vote the SRF. And it probably would mean a monthly payment, and we would make a monthly payment to the SCUMA board, and we would make interest on our runway accessory in between bond payments to the SRF fund. Whereas if you do a normal bond fund, we have a pretty good credit rating. We don't have to have anything from the county. We don't have to backlay anybody, or we can take them by the same, any county in or anybody else, we can be paid twice a year by buying a payment. That's, that's how that works as far as the cash flow part of it. The cash flow part of the sink is very important, because the cash flow in the township here for the sewer fund is very fragile. I, I'm only going to, here, it's tired of hearing her talk about it, but that's what it is. It was broke when I came back here in 2016. You had $300,000, and you got done making your November payments in '16, and it was, it was broke. We're back up today. We have, we have a funded balance today. It's not all, some of it's not restricted, but your sewer fund balance today is over a million dollars. We're not in bad shape, but we're not rich by any means. In fact, the Baker Tilly guy, the first thing he said was, he's, oh, you're about far where you were, because according to your analytic scale, you're at your lowest, lowest point of cash flow you're going to have for, what was it, a 15-year study? For the 15-year study, he was right out in the spotlight, and that's exactly where we are.
Good question. Which do you prefer?
I don't know. I want to check it. It's no different. You don't have to deal with me all the time. I'm a farmer. You borrow money, you go out and all.
I have a household, so I deal with it all the time too, so.
It's the same thing.
Exactly.
You really need to take, need to do your work, need to look at it, because the last thing I want to, is I don't, I'm sorry, but for the people who live here, it's on the, it's on the sewer system, or it's on this board, I'm sorry. But I don't want to pay for your sewer system in the country. And that's, it's all, it's all guaranteed that it didn't face any credit, the general fund. And if the sewer fund goes to the funk because you made some bad decisions, that's who's paying for it. This is, this is the general fund. And that means that everybody in the township pays for sewer. Whereas we moved out to the country, couple, the person, the person that I talked about this today, we moved across to the country because we didn't want, we didn't want to pay sewer fees. We didn't want, we messed the life up. We paid. And that's, that's the thing, I mean, there's a lot of people that feel that way.
Sure, good question.
It needs to be self-sufficient, and it needs to be taken care of by the system, and it can be, because we've proven that, and it can improve forever and ever. Capacity is important, and capacity is, future capacity is our life.
So roughly, is a better way to go than cash it out?
Not that thorough.
Well, that's, that's what I was asking.
Not that thorough.
I can say something now.
Yes, go ahead.
They're spending this $12,000 to be advised financially.
Okay.
Because they're going to lay out the options for us, and then depending on the interest rates available at the time, it, it becomes painfully obvious which one of those options will be the best at that time. Right now, nobody can tell you what that option's going to be.
Well, that's what I, okay, no, that's, Brenda, trust me Bliss.
So are you two feeling that the SCUMA board's going to move forward with this?
Well, you need part of the repair.
Yeah.
Absolutely. They have no choice. I mean, it's, it's, it's like, I don't know how to say it. It's like you having three tires on your car, or four tires on your car. You got to have four tires to get to work, which would be, all the people in the wetting bath, Watertown, and the wet city, all have to flush their toilet. It's got to go down somewhere. It's important to work. The plant has to function correctly. And otherwise, you're going to get, you can get into all kinds of problems. You read a lot in the paper all the time, how a plant, this charges into the river, or the plant does this, or the plant does that. I, I'm proud of what we do here. Despite, despite what huge and ice differences are bringing, I'm proud of what we do here.
I never said I wasn't proud, I'm sure.
I'm proud of the fact that we are financially in good shape, and I'm also proud of the fact that the sewer authority has always been in financial good shape. But even above that, it's probably known as one of the best working authorities with four different municipalities. There isn't a state. And it is. Now, that's, I mean, we all trust one another, and we all, we all take, and, and take everybody on.
You're always trusted here, fine.
There's not, that's not the way it works. And every vote counts. And that's what it's all about.
So at the end of the day, I want the board to go home tonight and wake up in the middle of the night, because we're talking about $3.8 million.
A small 4-4.
It's not 4-4.
Yeah.
4 is what I was.
That's going up.
They might, they might have better then. Maybe something's better. Too high, you don't have to start over again. That happens on these projects.
But if we, you know, there's just a big financial obligation here for us as a board, and we have to really be careful in what we do here, because there's, there's so much money involved in the future of all of our residents if we are able to do a really good job here.
Go ahead, Trustee.
I will spend a move approval of the agreement for services with Baker Tilly for the sewer rate study.
So the question I have, I can't ask. So you ready to second this?
Thanks, Jessica.
No, you've already.
No, not Marie.
All I'm saying, all I wanted to know was, your $12,000 that you're talking about for the study is coming out of the sewer fund, or it's coming out of the general fund?
Oh, the sewer.
Okay, that's what, that's all I needed to know.
It says, it says $11,900. And preferably, if I have my say, which I guess I kind of do.
You've got to round it up and down. You've got to round it up and down.
The thing needs to come out of contractual professional services and pay 100, and Karen and I talked about that today. This has no effect for the study on your CIP, this is not a CIP item. This is, this is all different than any other accounting item, so this doesn't come out of the CIP item. She will be back, and she will ask you for more money, as she said, for the CIP items that you talked about. This is different, this comes out of contractual professional services, you barely have enough money in there to cover.
Nope, that's what I, that's what I was asking. All right, go ahead.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Mr. Almariji?
Yes.
Mr. Venzi? Sorry. Mr. Whisthuster?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think what draws on me is that I try to learn all about the system and try to learn from Mr. Whisthuster, in his 20 years of experience with the sewers, that is a very substantive, so long-term business. I would use a need that, additional flows, that help our community and hopefully reduce the initial capacity, so I feel like it's a, it's a moving, so.
All right, we're going to take item C under B, items for action. It's your second quarter.
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
Nope.
I started and you weren't. I was going to say that on the second page, the last item, as we are holding currently the Parks and Rec, or it's not Parks and Rec, the Recreation Board meeting position, there is a line item here, 10175174, that includes money for benefits for that position. I don't know if you're, there's probably a holdout as well, so I wanted to make that clear. These expenditures here, the first one is one that came in, we had several applications for a company that wanted to go door-to-door with some lawn care, and we had to do background checks on those, so that was an expense that we could not predict, and it cost around $250. There are two items on here that are salaries that go along with the promotions that were approved at the last board meeting. There is an item here, the building grounds, for $44,000, that is transitioned to previously amounted, excuse me, budgeted amount, because the sign RFP that we chose for the electronic sign came in just a little bit higher, but there is a company that we have worked with in the past, and they have provided excellent service, as well as customer service. And then there are two, EPW, one is benefits. If we are to move one part-time position to a full-time position, we would provide benefits for that position, and that cost that is there is, or it's an estimate, we estimate a full-time family care coverage plan, and that's from August to December 2021. The other one, again, came out of a road committee meeting that we had recently, there's some work to be done on both Drumroll Road from Chandler to the fire station driveway, and then on Center Road from Purvis and the Howe, I included a contingency with that. There is work that can be done to prepare those roads for either a potential paving or a check seal process similar to paving, that would prepare them to be non-dirt roads in the future. This work would be tree trimming and cleaning up the ditches, and that's work that the Clinton County Road Commission can do in the fall and in the winter, so that's $25,000. And then the last, I'm going to excuse me, my mom's going to drive, is local services for $4,500. This is assistance from Michigan State University to help develop our Safe Roads to School Action Plan, and they charge $3,000 for the first school and $1,500 for each additional school. We have two schools, and therefore $4,500 will go to MSU to help us apply and develop the action plan for our application to Safe Roads to School.
Good question.
Yes.
Would you, on your first one, you're speaking about administrative services salary, $10,000, what's the total salary?
It is, it's actually, when I put 10, I would tie the actual salary here at the moment, would be moving this rates from $50,515 to $63,500, and comparing salaries from around the area, two townships that have, excuse me, deputy superintendents, Delta Township's range is $67,000 to $92,000, and Duett Township's range is 61,500 to $80,000. I chose to go more in line with the Duett Township salary and went to 63,500.
So that's more than 10,000, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The overall budget impact because of what's left there is about $6,252.75.
$52.75, okay. So you're going to take out, and you'll empty the money account, adding 10,000 to that account, to make for the $63,500. Just want to make sure my math is.
I'm afraid I don't have.
Okay. If you have 6,000 left in it.
No, no, it's got, it's got permanent balance, but there's 11 payrolls left in this year.
Right, okay, nope, that's, I just didn't know 10,000 was enough.
It is, it's because of the money that's currently in there.
That's what, okay. Okay, that same question you had to do with EPW, that's a 20,000 increase, so.
Split between two. The first one is the Director of Parks and Forest Works, he currently is making $56,596 and moving him to approximately $63,000.
Okay.
It's a similar situation where there's money left there, and it would be an addition of $6,791. The second part of that is that there is a part-time position that I would like to move to full-time.
Yes.
And so the balance of those 11 payrolls, to move that from 32 hours a week to 40 hours a week, is the balance.
Gotcha, okay. I just didn't know how you came up with the figure, that's what I was trying to.
Do we make a motion to approve the second quarter budget amendments as of today?
One second. Trusty Whisthuster?
I would like to see these budget amendments, I'd like to see something different than what they're, nothing against, you know, decisions, deputy superintendent Taylor, as far as salaries for this budget year for this position, as well as for the EPW positions, I'd like to see this all put off. I'd like to see the salary part, I don't have a problem with positions, they're fine, I'd like to see the salaries piece put off, and I'd like to see it run through the budget workshop, I'd like to see it run to the, to the end of the year and start next year with it in the budget, just for the simple fact, I don't believe myself that you have a full view of what you have for a full year here, because you haven't spent open for a full year here, you haven't ran your budget, the general fund budget hasn't ran for the whole year, it's quite some time now, and you had this funded balance you had, that is, you left in your last audit here, doesn't reflect the amount of money, that's really what you have and what you don't have. So, I, like I said, it's nothing personal against the EPW person and the deputy superintendent, but I think that you, I'd like to see them two items taken out of these budget amendments, and I'd like to see nothing done with that, but I'd like to see it brought to the budget workshop, that you're going to have here starting this next month, and I guess it's probably going to start this month. And I'd like to see you work through the numbers and see where you're at with the numbers to see what you got, before you do that.
Are you also requesting that for the EPW part-time and full-time?
I don't see where you can, where you'd that hurt anything, myself, I think you can live along here with what you got for the rest of the year, and reevaluate at budget workshop, so everybody's got a full view of what you got and what you're doing here. I'm pretty familiar with the budget, I'm pretty familiar with the numbers in this place, and that's my opinion on it. I'm a little bit sticker shocked, where we're going with some things around here, wages, but I also understand that we have quality people, we need to be, keep quality people. So that's my opinion about that. I think you may hold on to the new, you want to hold on, that's how I feel about it.
Trusty Feeney Bliss?
I think sticker shock makes a lot of sense. I have to say, over the last year, I've been incredibly sticker shocked at my own organization that I run. Thankfully, these salaries are what we pay entry-level people now, and I still can't hire them, I have three openings right today, if anybody's watching, come work for me. So it tends to be the market rate for folks that have far less qualities than the folks that we are encouraging to, to take these promotions. I hate to do, and I know this isn't what anybody is saying, but I would hate it to appear as if it's a bait and switch, that we've asked folks to take extra responsibility, but we're not willing to compensate them for that responsibility. So for those reasons, I think we should move this forward tonight, for the three, four more months that we have left that we're asking both of those staff members to do more work, I think they should be compensated for it.
Are you going to keep that in motion?
There's already motioning up there.
That's what I, so we're not going to, no, that's, I get it.
Is there a second?
Confused, Mr.
I know.
I don't know why you asked me a question when we said you know the answer.
Well, I just asked you a question.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Mr. Almariji?
Yes.
Mr. Venzi?
Yes.
Mr. Whisthuster?
No.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler Chandler?
I agree with what I'm saying. So that vote comes out?
To pass.
Okay. Now move to item B, under B, items for action, and this one is the introduction and first reading of ordinance 3173.
Thank you, and Trusty Feeney Bliss, if you have anything, as the lady's asked that group, the planning commission, I would love you to go in. This item, ordinance 3173, was brought forward to the planning commission by our previous planner, Nick Chafelski. He provided that with an overview and, I'm reading, referencing their minutes from Tuesday, July 13th, that this amendment closes a loophole which would allow a developer to build a multifamily dwelling development with eight or fewer units per building, while avoiding the need for a couple use.
Hmm.
And the planning commission has confirmed that, and approved this clause for me to view.
It's a math problem, is what it came out to be, that you could, you could get to what we were trying to not do by calling something, something else, and that would allow that number, this closes a loophole that you can't call this that and get the number that you were looking for. That's my very layman interpretation of the situation.
That's good, though.
Thank you.
That's what I'm learning.
Trusty Almariji, you had a question?
No, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
One second. There's my sound off for you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Trusty Almariji made the motion, seconded by Trusty Venzi, okay.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Mr. Almariji?
Yes.
Mr. Venzi?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Kuesler?
Yes.
Okay, Superintendent Report Number 15.
Thank you. That was a lot, thank you for all of your time and consideration tonight. I think we're belving into some things that I never anticipated in watching for the past eight years, two other superintendents work. Of course, I never thought we'd be dealing with a pandemic, and I never anticipated knowing this much about sewers. But, you know, you have to learn things very quickly, and I do enjoy what I'm learning. General Whisthuster's correct, the budget is due to you in the beginning of September, so you will be seeing that very shortly. All of the department heads have worked through their budget requests and are submitting those to me as we speak, some of the committees have already discussed those, the Senior Services Advisory Committee has already discussed theirs, the Police and Fire Board will discuss theirs, I believe, I can't remember, it's the same sort of next week, thank you. So everyone's kind of in the budget frame of mind, so we will be working through those. We will be asking you if it is your pleasure to have work sessions on the budget. There have been times in the past where the board sees the budget and we go through it at a 30,000-feet overview, and then there's a request to have a work session, and we go line by line, page by page, so it really is this board's pleasure as to how we move through that process. If you want to do it all during regular board meetings, or if you choose to have work sessions that occur before the meeting, I am certainly open to what you would like to do with that, and how you would like to work through that. So the senior center has been successful in the last couple of weeks that it's been open. We have hired a new assistant cook, who is working out very well, she has about 20 years of service in the food industry.
Superintendent Report Number 15.
Thank you. That was a lot, thank you for all of your time and consideration tonight. I think we're belting into some things that I never anticipated in watching for the past eight years, two other superintendents' work. Of course, I never thought we'd be dealing with a pandemic, and I never anticipated knowing this much about sewers. But, you know, you have to learn things very quickly, and I do enjoy what I learn. Chairman Wisswasser is correct, the budget is due to you in the beginning of September, so you will be seeing that very shortly. All of the department heads have worked through their budget requests and are submitting those to me as we speak. Some of the committees have already discussed those, the senior services advisory committee has already discussed theirs, the police and fire board will discuss theirs, I believe, I can't remember if it's the same sort of next week, thank you. So everyone's kind of in the budget frame of mind, so we will be working through those. We will be asking you if it is your pleasure to have work sessions on the budget. There have been times in the past where the board sees the budget and we go through it at a 30,000-feet overview, and then there's a request to have a work session, and we go line by line, page by page, so it really is this board's pleasure as to how we move through that process. If you want to do it all during regular board meetings, or if you choose to have work sessions that occur before the meeting, I am certainly open to what you would like to do with that and how you would like to work through that. So the senior center has been successful in the last couple of weeks that it's been open. We have hired a new assistant cook who is working out very well. She has about 20 years of service in the food industry and is already certified, a certified food safety manager, so you hit the, we hit the lucky one there. It isn't often that you find people that are already food safety certified in order to do those jobs, so that's, that's open for us. 55 meals approximately are being served every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that's an approximate. So far, everyone is healthy, we hope it remains that way. We are doing contact tracing at each table, we are doing the masks, of course, and everything that we can do to try to keep people safe. We're also on the lookout for anyone that might appear to not be well. We have not had to ask anyone to leave, but no one appears to be coughing, feverish, or acting ill, you know, up to this date. If that were the case, we would ask them to leave and come back another day. Excuse me?
Are you taking people's temperature when they get here?
We're not.
We're not?
We're not, no. But the mask mandate is in place, and then we are, we are doing the best we can. I know that Jason has brought up some issues of people not, you know, wearing their masks diligently, but staff is trying to be aware of that and trying to address those where we can ask people to, if they forget after they get a drink, or if they're trying to be devious, asking them to put their mask back on. Most everyone has to comply with that, so I don't think we've had any issues at the time. I'm trying to think of something else. We have good news to report in that we have a planner that has accepted our offer of employment and will start with us on August 30th. I'm very excited to have him come on board. Taylor and I sat with him for some time during his first interview, and the vice chairman and planning commissioner, Mr. Roy, and planning commissioner, chairman Dan Kramer interviewed him the second time, and we were pretty much unanimous in that he was a very talented young man and that we were, we would be lucky to have him as part of our team, so. His name is Miles, and he'll start with us on August 30th. We continue to work through the restructuring, and I appreciate the feedback that I received tonight, and we will continue to move forward. The senior services advisory board has indicated that they would like that position over there to be a full-time position, so we'll try to work amongst and see what we can come up with. I do take it very seriously in that there's thought that we're spending a lot of money right now, and I hear that. I've also heard some of you say that we need to invest in our people, so I'm trying to consider both sides and strike a balance with that, but that can often tend to be very delicate and difficult, so, but please just know that I am hearing both sides and trying to accommodate what is I being asked to do. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Doesn't seem to be, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are public statements 16? Wait a minute, you sound like me. All right, none at this time. Board member comments? Jason, go ahead and start that in.
I'm also, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Benzie?
I'm fine.
Trustee Willis Bliss?
I'm happy, thank you.
You're what? No, hey, it ain't right. Clerk?
I just want to let everybody know that Bob Liebie passed away last week.
Yes, thank you.
He was a great asset to the community. I had my figures here, I can't find them in my notes. He was on the board of trustees, he was on the planning commission, he was on the board review, he helped me out a lot with elections, everybody was so excited to see him when they went to, you know, vote. He was on one more thing, I can't remember.
He was just moving for several years.
Yep, he helped with the senior center, did that establish, so we are truly going to miss him, he was a great guy.
He was. Trustee Rosecrans?
The road committee meeting, we have a lot of invasive species, and just to let everybody know that we're talking to the county on trying to control them by spraying them, and they're going to give us a quote, because if we let it get out of the road right away, then it's in their yard, the county cannot spray that, they have to spray it themselves, and we have about three different kinds, and we got to be really careful.
What kind are you looking at? What kind are you looking at?
All the Japanese and knotweed, purple.
Straystray.
Yeah. And then there's the one that looks like a cattail, but it has, what is it?
Fright Mighty's.
Okay, that has a, a different kind of top on it, like grass, but it looks almost like cattail when it's grown, and we got to be real careful. People got to be careful they don't buy that plant and set it in their yard, because it can, it can spread tremendously fast, and it just destroys everything else around it.
Yeah.
And those are much of the same ones we're fighting in Park Lake.
Yeah.
Okay, the reason I ask is because our parking lot, we don't have those types of, but we do have others, so that's good to know. We said, Jeff.
So, I mean, in my experience, the spraying by the county is pretty indiscriminate in terms of.
It is indiscriminate.
It's worried that Fright Mighty's being a predominantly water-based plant.
Oh, they're in the ditch down here on Park Lake Road, and most of our areas that are along the road.
Right, and as you go north towards Victor, there's huge patches that are within our wetlands. I just, I don't know if there's competition.
They have a gentleman that's all, that's what he does especially, and.
Especially in terms of the toxicology related to the insect or the.
And most, well, as I understood, if you listen to them, basically they were using Rhonda.
Who?
To kill them, and it don't kill it, it just drops, pushes it back, and it comes up again next year and you got to spray it again. But if you don't, it gets so big, then you can't spray it. I mean, you can spray it, but it costs a lot of money.
Is the county road commission to do that spraying, or?
Yeah.
I think it's contracted.
Is it a, is it a hard or something?
But they'll give us a price, and where we stand there, we're making a map up of where it's at in the township, and we'll go from there. Get a quote, and you'll be seeing that come from the road county. And Bob Liebie, I miss him.
Trustee Feeney Bliss?
I was on vacation with my family last week, I snuck across the Canadian border about nine hours after they opened. I was really impressed with their COVID protocols over there, just they had, they ran a tight ship in that country, so I'm excited that we're talking and happy we're talking about what we can do better and to protect our citizens here in the township. They seem to be really serious up north. And then I just would hope that the rest of the board will join me in a round of applause for Brenda, who was named deputy clerk of the year. Congratulations. Should be proud, we're proud of you.
And look how conservative she is, she goes with the back post of the, on the cardboard and finishes up her remarks.
I would echo myself for Bob Liebie, he was a champion of our township, and he'll always remember it in our township. I was fortunate enough to meet his, one of his daughters, his only daughter, the second one that he's adopted. I haven't met, you know, the rest of the family yet, but he absolutely is going to be missed. I miss him already. He used to have these amazing talks, and boy can he talk, it took it out. It was really an interesting combination, to say the least. As for the complaint, I'm going to say that on Monday, August 2nd, there was a security breach, and that the staff did contact, which was very nice, the board of trustees, so that they were very aware of it, to inform them on the formal complaint, which was put in to Michigan State Police, and it was a female who came, and she took the information, I think she talked to you too, and I don't know if she talked to Jason, maybe he was mentioned, but I'm not sure, she's, she's going to come back the 18th, and she will be checking with the administration to see. So a formal investigation has been started. So, that's it. Do we take a vote on adjournment?
It will be adjourned.
Second.
Got it.
You got it.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Feeney Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer Eji?
Yes.
Wait, Taylor, I hope that doesn't pick up too much of the paper shuffling. Taylor, is there a point of finding out if it's kept up a lot of paper shuffling?
It's not going to be easy.
No, it's hard, because your point is people, if we make the mandates, so, but we also know people aren't coming without the mandates, so either way, we're going to be cutting people off.
You'd say that maybe they could have the people that have, if the lawyers' masks set on the porch.
Yeah.